Thank you. From Crosswinds Community Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice Chairman Hall. If you'd all please stand.
Lord, we thank you tonight for the opportunity to invite you to come into this place, to give us wisdom in the affairs of this city. Lord God, I thank you that even in details, that you are always there to offer a willing hand. So, Lord God, in your word it says that in the heart of man we make plans, but you are the one that directs our steps. So, we ask for that tonight, your blessing, your wisdom, as in this room decisions are made, plans are set forth, we ask that you'll direct the steps, ones that will be honoring to you, and the one things that will be good to this city and its citizens. We thank you for it, and we ask this blessing. And also, Lord, I just pray a blessing upon each person here that's giving up their time this evening. I pray that the meeting will go as speedily as possible so they can get home to their families, and a blessing upon their health and their families. I ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
I place the flag, hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May the roll call, please.
Commissioners Diana Cook.
Present.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Raj Molly.
Absent.
Sandy Smith.
Absent.
Fabian Tarasiano.
Here.
Vice Chairman Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Vose.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. It would be appropriate, I assume, to excuse Commissioners Smith and Molly. All right. So, without objection, they are excused. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which the input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Lunicky?
No, Chairman Vose, we do not.
All right, thank you. So then, any person who would like to address the Commission on any agendaized item is requested to compile a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item that you'd like to discuss. Each person will then be given an opportunity to address the Commission at the time the item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the chamber and next to Mr. Adams, our Deputy City Attorney. Individual speakers would be limited to three minutes each, other than the applicant who is really given as much time as they need to present should we have applicants wishing to address us this evening. The first item is our consent calendar. It would be the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 17, 2012. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we accept the minutes from December 17, 2012 meeting.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll be abstaining since I missed that meeting. Please vote.
Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. All right. The first action item is a new public hearing on conditional use permit 12-22, which is a request for an extension for the construction of a 38-megawatt photovoltaic solar generating facility comprised of two 19-megawatt solar fields in the rural residential 2.5 zone. The recommendation is granting a one-year extension. So, do we have any speakers on this matter?
I have no speakers, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone wish to hear a staff report on this? I do have one question that I'd like to raise, or questions, not specifically regarding this, but if I recall correctly, the City Council members, a couple of the members, certainly the mayor, raised an issue relative to screening, fencing, landscaping on photovoltaic projects in the rural residential zone in the community, and I was wondering if staff would like to address that general topic this evening? If you're prepared to do that?
Not at great length. However, I will say that we've had recently the first of what I would call our commercial production solar PV facilities completed. That was a project which, you may recall, was known as the Two-Soul Energy Project when you saw it. It has been completed out in the vicinity of 100th Street West and Lancaster Boulevard, Avenue I, and they have completed the landscaping and approach that they were looking at. I guess what I would ask from a staff standpoint is for the Planning Commission, and we've invited anybody else who wants to go take a look at it, to see what their thinking on it is. And of course, even at this stage, it's kind of hard to tell what it's going to look like in a couple of years, but we believe that the landscaping approach that they used and which staff endorsed will eventually result in a screening of the chain link fence and give that kind of visual buffer that we're looking for out in those areas, and we'll do it in a manner that's consistent with kind of the rural appearance in which most of these projects are located. But certainly, we're open to other suggestions, and I would say that depending on the specifics of individual projects, there may be areas where we will ask for greater setbacks, or areas for hiking, or equestrian trails, or other kinds of things, particularly if that's a desire of the community, or it's demonstrated on the city's master plan of trails and bikeways, that that's an area we would like to have that. I don't know if Jocelyn would like to add anything additional. She was the primary staff member overseeing that project.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of things. For the site that is actually built, they planted approximately 1,800 plants on five feet center, so they will grow up ultimately to be taller than the six-foot chain link fence, and should screen it completely. We have another project that is currently going through the approval of their grading plans, building plans, and their landscaping plans, and they are actually working directly with the resident immediately across the street to get his blessing on what it would look like, so that he's also happy with it. And we did send them back corrections, and I expect those plans to be submitted back to the city here shortly.
So, as a minimum standard, I mean, it's not too dissimilar to what we require of most every other type of perimeter visual impact, if you will, whether it be fencing or landscaping, or a combination thereof. Didn't realize it was on five-foot centers, however, out on the...
This particular one was planted on that because of the type of plant species they used, and if you asked me off the top of my head, I don't remember.
There were different types of plants. It's not all one plant, right?
It is all one plant, but what they did do is the trees and very large bushes that were already along the perimeter of the site, those were left in place, because obviously they're happy and they're screening the project site from view currently. So, we left what was there and then just added to it.
It seems to me from my chair that the project at 97th and I, and in that vicinity with the type of landscaping that's been embedded there, as well as the chain link fencing, I mean, it seems appropriate for the rural environment, certainly. I don't... There was some question or comment from some of the council members relative to undergrounding utilities, for instance, which I consider visual impacts as well. However, I don't frankly think it's practical to, or cost efficient to be attempting to underground 66 KV lines and similar lines of that. I mean, it's just extraordinarily expensive. It doesn't make any economic sense, and certainly wouldn't encourage additional solar energy projects or other alternative energy projects in our community. It seemed to me to be very cost prohibitive to try to impose those kinds of conditions, at least from what my limited knowledge of development costs would be.
Just for information on these two, the one that was built, there was already a transmission line running through the corner of the property, and that's what they tapped into, so there were no additional lines off the site run. The Beautiful Earth project under question is tying into the substation that's immediately adjacent to them, so they will also have no more lines running down the street.
But they will have some. There are some in the neighborhood. I mean, it's not like they're introducing a...
Right, but they aren't adding any more at this time.
But the relative cost of undergrounding a 66 KV liner, a 12 KV liner, a 4,800, or whatever, I mean, it gets extraordinarily expensive, and if the initiative is to create a, if I have the terminology correct, a net zero energy producing community, it seems to me to be very counterproductive to attempt to do that, but that's just my opinion. But getting back to the fencing and the land, I mean, it all kind of goes together from where I'm looking.
Yeah, I think from staff standpoint, as more of these projects are built, we'll continue to evaluate, you know, how the screening works in various settings, and there may be areas where we're going to want things that are different than what we did out here, but...
Well, if you look at the, you know, and comments have been raised in some public hearings regarding the projects further west in the county jurisdiction, out at 140th and in that area, and their screening, their setbacks are extreme, seems to me, and their landscaping seems to be skimpy, and their fencing is, has, what, green sheeting on it, which, I mean, if you really want to create something that's unattractive, you might want to do that. But again, that's a different jurisdiction and different idea, but I certainly wouldn't encourage us to go that route. Has anybody suggested that the chain link fencing have green sails on it?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Good. Anyway, that's my only comment. Someone may have other comments that care to offer them. The conditions on this project are similar to what we've imposed on other projects, right?
That is correct. We made two minor changes. One was just standardizing the wording with respect to the sales tax, and the other one was adding this in the city's endowment commission.
Very good. Anyone have anything else to offer?
A question on, does anybody have any idea how much Edison's charging these developers to put in, hook up to their substations?
I don't know, but Michael Clayton with the developer is here if you want to ask him questions.
That would be one question. I had somebody ask me that the other day, that...
We can't really give you specifics on our project, but I mean, it depends on the other loads that are in the system, other projects that are coming in, and up and down the line, so it's very project-specific, but the costs are quite high.
Edison charges you a great deal of money to hook up?
They charge you a great deal of money, and they take an awful lot of time. Yeah, so, yeah.
What do you think on the fencing requirement? What was your... Last meeting we had, it brought up, and the developer was asked if he would mind putting in tubular steel fencing on a street that was well-traveled. I'm not asking you to agree to it now, I just was wondering what your viewpoint is. I know it's more cost.
Well, we're happy to do what we've agreed to, and we think that's pretty sufficient, but I mean, if the city, you know, wants something, we're always happy to talk.
As a developer, what do you think about a cost that are like that, that cuts into profit?
It's quite expensive, and these projects are, they're very competitive. The profit margins are not extremely great on them to begin with, and they take an awful lot of time to get done, as it is.
So, regulations that we could make up here could actually put you out of business or make you not want to do the project?
That's possible, yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments, sir. All right then. No other comments. The public hearing was open. I didn't say that, but in fact it was. So, no further comments? Anything more from staff?
No further comments.
All right, thank you. All right then, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection, and consider a motion on the recommendation.
I move to grant a one-year extension to February 11, 2014, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the revised conditions listed, attachment resolution to number 10-50.
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. All right, the next public hearing is on the residential zone update. This is a matter that's been before us before, so the public hearing is open on this. Do we have any speakers?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
No speakers, all right.
We do have people in attendance. I don't know if they wish to speak.
Okay. All right then. Anyone care to hear a staff report on this?
I'd like it to be a staff report to go into why we're revisiting it.
Sure. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. We've taken a look at this for most of 2012, and back in October, the Planning Commission did adopt Resolution 12-13 recommending to the City Council approval of the update to the residential zones. We're bringing it back due to staff's recommendation for further revision to the section on accessory dwelling units. In response to recent inquiries and comments from the public, in addition, staff is recommending various amendments to zoning code for implementation of housing element-specific actions that were adopted back in May of 2012. In regards to the accessory dwelling units, this is actually the section formally titled "Second Dwelling Units." The proposed changes for accessory dwelling units allow for separate utility meters from the primary dwelling unit as an option instead of a requirement, including meters for water, gas, and electricity. Separate address and mailbox for the accessory dwelling unit are also optional. Also included, we've drafted new language for covenants, conditions, and restrictions that would run with the property. Accessory dwelling unit owners would sign and record an owner occupancy covenant containing a language, and this will be recorded with the recorder's office prior to receiving a permit. There's also a short section on SROs in the residential zones. This stands for single-room occupancy. State Housing and Community Development, HCD, requires jurisdictions to address the need for SROs as a means to provide another form of affordable housing. This is a multi-tenant building that provides permanent residency to people in individual rooms with tenants typically sharing kitchen facilities. Many SROs take the form of a converted hotel or motel building with rooms ranging in size from 200 to 350 square feet. There are some senior or assisted living facilities that resemble the function operation of SROs, so we've included a short section in the residential zones. The additional zoning changes pertain to transitional and supportive housing. The existing zoning code contains some language that's inconsistent with the city's existing group home ordinance and procedures. Specifically, this has to do with the definition of family that's in our zoning ordinance that limits residential facilities to six or fewer persons, including employees and the licensee. And the last change involves emergency shelters in the light industrial zone. Back when we adopted the housing element in 2012, there was a policy that, a policy that the state required the city to adopt, which requires the city to identify at least one zone where emergency shelters are permitted without a CUP or other discretionary action. The housing element calls out the light industrial zone as the zone in which emergency shelters would be reviewed administratively without a CUP. So, in conclusion, the changes for accessory dwelling units, that will allow property owners greater flexibility to accommodate various household living arrangements. The zoning code amendments implementing housing element-specific actions are necessary to comply with state law. With that, staff recommends to the Planning Commission that they adopt Resolution 13-01, recommending to the City Council approval of the city's residential zone. Title 17, Chapter 8 of the municipal code, Exhibit A, with the added revisions and other zoning code amendments for implementation of housing element-specific actions. Welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. There may be some.
Yeah, I have one.
Chuck, would these changes, these will bring us in compliance with the state housing element, correct?
Correct, yeah. These were changes that were in the adopted housing element. We kind of promised that we would follow through with the implementation of these actions, so this is the implementation of the actions.
So, the discretion, your analysis and adjustments to the language of the appropriate sections are really limited by statute, then?
They are.
So, just a question, a current community shelter that we have in our community is not in a light industrial zone, however.
I don't know if, and...
No, it's actually located in a mixed-use, I can't remember if it's mixed-use employment or mixed-use neighborhood.
Mixed-use neighborhood, yeah.
But it's located in that zone.
So, this is, but it's existing in conformance?
Yes, under the current zone.
Under the... However, if another community shelter, if you will, for lack of a better description, is proposed, if it's, it would be used by right in a light industrial zone?
Yes, it would, if, well, assuming that this is enacted ultimately, yes.
So, if it's in conformance with state law, it would be somewhat of a challenge not to adopt it?
Yes, what state law, as Chuck indicated, requires is that a city must identify at least one zone in which it will permit emergency shelters by right. In the city's housing element, which was adopted several months ago, that zone was identified as the city's light industrial zone. So, this merely brings that into conformance with the, you know, the housing element that we've already adopted.
And the transitional housing as well, is transitional or supportive housing, or... At any rate, that definition would be in, those transitional units would be used by right as well?
Yes, and I think it's important to note that the primary change that we're even looking at, other than calling it out within the zone, is that the city's current definition in the zoning code of family is really the issue that HCD was concerned about, and that current definition actually doesn't even match up with what's in the city's group home licensing ordinance. So, what this would do is bring those into compliance with each other. However, the land use change or the zoning change does not create any kind of conflict with the city's existing group home licensing ordinance, but it does deal with that issue that HCD was a little bit hung up on, which was definition of family, and it brings us into conformance with what that ought to be.
Is it all light industrial zones, or just one that we designate?
No, it would have to be any area that is designated within the city as light industrial. You know, so any place that holds that zoning classification could in theory be a location by right for emergency shelter.
It would exclude specific plan areas?
Yeah, would not include areas that are under a specific plan or something like that. That's a different category.
So, the choices would be some, a residential, a commercial, or an industrial zone, one of...
Right.
So, the choice that's been made is light industrial?
Yes.
Are we referring to emergency shelters at this point?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Okay.
You know, I don't see anything inappropriate, but it does not preclude the agencies from encouraging that type of use in other areas with some form of oversight, conditional use, or whatever that may be, right?
Correct.
So, it doesn't preclude the establishment, it just...
Yeah.
As other similar type uses or other, you know, it'd be like a restaurant with a liquor license, where you have, you know, they're allowed in a number of different zones as long as they comply with the state requirements and our own requirements for conditional use.
Correct. The philosophy from HCD is that they want to make sure that every jurisdiction has at least one zoning classification in which by right you can have emergency shelters, so that cities can essentially zone them out of existence completely within their locality.
So, the structure of the law has to do with the identified receptors? Those that are receiving the service, whether they be a defined family member, or identified in some method, or a receptor being a shelter, in my definition of it. So, if you're in a group home, you're, you know, identified as some form of a family?
Yes. Yes, that's actually been pretty much the legal, well, our deputy city attorney could probably speak to it more, but that's essentially been the legal thought for probably a good 20 years in terms of definitions of families and groups and so forth.
The purpose is so government doesn't preclude the establishment of any type of use?
Well, I think...
As far as the legislation has gone so far.
Right, yeah.
But they're in session now, so God knows what they'll come up with next.
Yeah, we can only address what's currently in law, so that's what we're attempting to do.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
I've just had one question, Chairman Vose. Just as a matter of clarification, so the single-room occupancy, the SRO... Just as a matter of clarification, so the single-room occupancy, the SRO, so the fundamental difference between that and a guest house is size and the lack of a kitchen in a guest house?
An SRO building is intended to take the form of a converted hotel, it's a multi-tenant building, so I guess the closest thing we have to an SRO could be the Essex House, which you have individual rooms and they may have a common dining facility.
Okay, thank you, that's clear.
Well, that dates you, Chan, calling it the Essex House. My concerns go back to the solar requirement. We had the guy from Beautiful Earth tell us that requirements do hinder development, and we, with this program, we're going to create more regulations, and my view is, is I'd rather have fewer regulations, let the market decide. We just had the news that KB Homes announced that they've built their thousandth solar house without any regulations from us, city, to do it, so there is a market demand for it, and I'd love to see the market work that way towards it. Last time I brought it up, I made a motion and it died for lack of a second to strip the requirement out. I'm just, basically this time, just putting on record why I was against it, and I don't think I'm required this time to ask the commission to strip it out. We've been over that road before, and I feel like that it's, the water's under the dam, over the dam.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to thank staff for all the work that's been coming into this and the clarification, so I know it's going to be a good work, and we've asked a lot of questions, and I want to thank the best for that, we really do appreciate it.
And it'll be back before us in 2013, in what, three months?
Sometime this summer. I would say, yeah, five, six months. It's due to HCD in October, so I need some time to get it through the commission and the council.
Don't take any collect calls from Sacramento, you'll be okay.
Can you still make collect calls? I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, I didn't know what a collect call was.
They're on a very tight budget up north. You hadn't heard?
Oh, I'm well aware of that, yeah.
I understand, yeah, they're making collect calls now.
Usually they just send emails.
Collect emails, yeah, no doubt. All right then, so no further comments from anyone? It'd be appropriate then to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on the recommendation.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 13-01, recommending to the city council approval of a comprehensive update to the city's residential zoning ordinance in Title 17, Chapter 8 of the Lancaster Municipal Code. Another zoning code amendments for implementation of the housing element-specific actions.
Second.
Thank you. All right, questions, comments? Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0, and tentatively, we'll look at scheduling this in front of the city council, their second meeting in February.
Thank you. All right then, that closes our action items. Director's announcement?
No announcements, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I do have one announcement, I should have said this in the beginning, but, you know, thank you all for your concerns and good wishes while I was on a unplanned holiday at Antelope Valley Hospital. Great care, great folks. The facility, however, is a little cruddy, but hopefully, when they get all their construction done in 2000 and God knows when, it'll be able to get cleaned up a little bit. Anyway.
You were greatly missed and welcome back.
Well, thank you, thank you. You guys, I would have rather been here, that's for sure.
Me too.
All right, anything from the commission? Public business from the floor, non-agendized item. This portion of the agenda is when folks in the audience can talk to us about anything they wish that's a non-agenda item. We can't take any action on it, obviously, but individual speakers can speak to us for three minutes if they wish. Do we have any non-agendized item speakers?
I have no speakers cards, Mr. Chairman.
Great, then we stand adjourned to our special meeting and for agenda review on Monday, February 11th at 5:30 PM here in the planning conference room at Lancaster City Hall, and thank you all.